Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens on any item that is not on today's agenda. Seeing none, approve of payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion in second to pay the bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes from the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. First item, approval of the final contract voucher for Seal Coat and Stripton for various county roads. Dave again.
He told me he was gonna be here for this one, but he's in the midgie.
You fell for that.
I did. I'm here to get the approval for the final voucher for our Seal Coat project this summer. The contractor was Aztec. Project turned out really well, kinda caught us up on all our preventative maintenance, seal coating, all of our asphalt roads. Came in a little bit over budget, but only 1.6 percent.
What are the board's wishes?
Most approve the contract. Say voucher.
Motion in a second to approve the request on this one, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Very simple. Committee reports.
Thank you.
Jenny.
Last week, Commissioner Whalen and I attended the PIC committee. There's some items that will come before this board, just reclassification of some employee grades in the juvenile detention center. And there are no new positions, they were all budgeted for, but just will result in some savings going forward and will also result in some different steps. And so, I don't know, promotions going forward may be better or easier.
Yeah, I think it will be.
But there was another, was there one other? No. Sorry. Then the Buffalo Red River watershed meeting, I attended the one watershed, one plan meeting in Barnesville last week. They are making great progress on that plan. We had a recap of all the meetings and timelines up until this point. We had the draft plan of section five. We preliminarily approved that, basically in context. And then also the section six, which is the plan administration. So, that probably around June of next year will go out for public comment and then that'll be close to wrapping up. So, I have all that documentation if you'd like to read any of this. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Kevin?
On Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, we're with a solid way subcommittee meeting with Kirk regarding developing a plan for reimbursing communities for recycling dollars, part of which is the score dollars, and part just that we reimburse through the county for recycling that is the incentive for communities to recycle. And, you know, so Kirk and Shannon have been working hard on that, developing a new formula that we use to, right now, they don't, the formula that they have, they could end up, we could end up actually paying out than what we anticipate and budget for. And so, that's not a good thing, so. So, that's in the process and we're getting close to coming up with a formula there. That same afternoon, then, I did meet with our administrator and our juvenile center folks regarding plans for ribbon cutting for when the juvenile center is complete. And that was kinda the early planning discussions for that, probably looking at sometime between March and May where that would happen, so. And that concludes my report for last week.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, the one meeting I had was at the one watershed, Buffalo Red River, Jenny reported that, and it was that as soon as that gets done next spring, I think, they're gonna be ready to receive some funds and be able to start working on some of those projects they got laid out. So, looking forward to that.
Jim?
I didn't have any meetings, no meetings, no report.
I had the PIC meetings that I already talked about, and then we did meet with Steve and James from Detention and some construction issues too that we'll be talking about in the near future. Kevin was there also at that meeting, so. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also attended last Tuesday the PIC meeting that both Commissioner Whalen and Moore Joe I also participated in the ribbon cutting meeting for the juvenile center. That afternoon, I met with Mark Sloan and met Jacobson about some upgrades, some software, outdated program that they currently have that will benefit both their programs. Met on the twenty-seventh, met with James O'Donnell and Commissioner Campbell and Whalen in regards to the completion date of the juvenile center. And that afternoon, worked with Onsted Twitchell and Colleen on an MCC JPA issue. Yesterday, met with Brian Melton on a series of county issues and also Matt Jacobson. I just wanted to follow up, last week, I kinda put on the radar some of the issues that they've determined that DHS, that there was some overpayment to every county and the state. Yesterday afternoon, I received an email from Julie Rang, Executive Director from AMC. The executive committee met adopting a motion requesting that counties currently do not pay back the allocations that DHS has said are for overpayment until after the 2020 legislative session. The hope is that AMC is gonna work and finding some different ways to potentially pay that back rather than have the counties do that. Rhonda received notification today that DHS is gonna begin billing as early as this month, but AMC would recommend that this board provides a letter to DHS stating that we're not planning on paying any of those bills until there's some different resolution.
Do we know what the amount is, Steve, for Clay County?
Yes, Clay County's amount that they would be asking for is $118,922.23.
Wow.
Perfect. So, I am meeting with Rhonda on Thursday to talk about some of those different issues, so I'll have an update here again in a couple of weeks. Also, just to put on your radar, in 2011, we signed a 24-month contract for the juvenile center project with Michael J. Burns Architect Firm. That contract is now expired, and so we've had some initial discussions on how that we'll work forward with this contract or without a contract to get to the end of the project, which right now is scheduled to be March 12th of next year.
Did you say 2001?
Excuse me, 2017. And so, I'll keep the board updated as that progresses. And that concludes my report.
Okay, short meeting. So, we could start truth and taxation, then we'll be outta here for a little bit, but I think we better wait till six o'clock, so we'll take a break till six o'clock, so. Steve, you wanna begin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Whalen said, we're gonna just address our citizens just briefly here. Tonight's agenda basically is gonna be this packet that you can grab right by the door if you don't have that, and go ahead and grab that. The second piece is we do have a sign-in for those of you that would like to speak tonight. What we would ask you to do is sign your name in, and when you come to the council here to address your first and last names before you address your comments. The other thing that I wanna make sure is, I'm sure all of you guys are here for the truth and taxation portion to talk about the budget and the levy piece, but historically, we also have citizens that come to this meeting each year that wanna talk about their valuations. And unfortunately, the valuation portion isn't done during this meeting. This evening, we have Nancy Gunnison and her staff that if you have questions or concerns about your valuation, could go across the hall and have a meeting with her. But for tonight, we're just here to talk about the budget and the levy for 2012. And so, with that, if anybody wants to talk to Nancy, you can certainly head out now, otherwise, we'll begin with our truth and taxation presentation.
I thank you again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you guys are certainly aware, this budget process started back in May with our department heads taking a look at their budgets. Those budgets were prepared and presented initially to the county administrator and the county auditor, and then most of them came to you as a full board for feedback. This board provided us directive and numerous adjustments were made over the number of months until September 24th, where we signed a resolution, 2019-32 was approved by this board setting the preliminary budget. That brings us to this evening, truth and taxation. We're gonna be walking through the budget packet with you tonight. If there's any questions or comments that you guys have throughout this process, feel free to ask. We'll also be providing the public an opportunity to speak and ask questions at the end of the presentation. So, if we go to the first page, I think that the crux of why many people may be here tonight is our first slide, and that's looking at our Clay County tax levy for 2020. These dollars are the dollars that we will be looking for to our citizens to contribute in revenue for our upcoming budget. The levy for 2020 is $35,014,703. This levy is broken down into separate, in five separate and distinct categories, our general fund, which serves a number of different issues that we'll talk in more detail later, social services, which is roughly 28.92 percent, Roden Bridge, which is 9.48 percent, debt retirement of 1.43 percent, and our building fund, which is 0.13 percent. As these funds come in each year, our county auditor, Laurie Johnson, allocates the dollars into the appropriate funds. When we look at page two, deals with our expenditures. As you can see, the expenditures for 2020 are $94,775,196. This form breaks down the expenses into eleven separate categories. As you can see, there's quite a significant difference between the expenditures of $94 million and the levy of $34 million. And it's important for our citizens to understand that as the county really are an extension of the state. Each county in the state of Minnesota acts as a pass-through, both in responsibility and financial aspect, and the state and federal government mandates different services to us. These funds are used to make up the difference and balance the revenues and the expenses. Later, we'll be breaking down each department in more detail, but this document gives you a larger view of the overall budget expenditures for 2020.
Steve, in that building fund there, that one, did we put $50,000 into the building fund?
The building fund was one of, is, yes, we put $50,000 in the building fund, and that goes into Joe's maintenance budget to address different issues within the campus.
Oh, I thought that was the jail fund, oh, excuse me.
If you recall, this was one of the areas that we did utilize in mitigating the levy increase. We did have $300,000, or it was $350,000 this year that we did remove from that account.
Very good, okay.
If we take a look at our Clay County levy history on page three, this document provides a historical look at the certified levies from 2016 to 2019. It also provides the proposed 2020 levy. This board takes great pride in annual budget in hopes of not having large fluctuations in levies from year to year, and so there's a great deal of scrutiny that our department heads face and have a clear understanding from this board. And I think that, again, this levy is a little bit higher than what we would normally see, but it is within the range of the last 15 to 16 years of where we've been. The bottom half of this document addresses the 2020 revenues again that we saw from page one, and also compares it to the levy from 2007, which gives us our levy increase of 7.09. Now, certainly, one of the things that are important for our citizens to understand is while we cannot guarantee growth every year, this year, we do have new construction growth within Clay County. We are very fortunate to project an increase of 1.24 percent. And so, from a levy perspective, our final net levy would be 5.85 percent for 2020. Page four, we look at our budget history from 2016 to 2020. Again, if you look up into the top left, far left-hand column, you can see all of the revenues that Clay County has projected to receive, not only just the revenues from our levy collection that we spoke about on page one, but also the federal and state funding that we talked about through the extension of the state responsibilities. We saw charges for services, licensing and permits, and interest on investments totaling In the column below that, we have our expenditures, and again, we covered these expenditures on page two, and they are totaling $94,775,196. Again, for our citizens, you look and say, well, that leaves us expenses over revenues of $33,171,36. It's important for our citizens to understand that this isn't a matter of overspending or deficit spending, rather, it has to deal with our departments who utilize their capital improvement internal services to save for significant purchases and/or projects. And so, these funds or projects are gonna be utilized in 2020 but have been saved over multiple budgets. And so, these funds will make up that difference in the revenues to the expenditures. When we look at pages five and six, it takes a little bit of a deeper dive into each of the departments here at the county. Again, I don't plan to go through each of these line, each of these departments, as we have been done, we've done this from the county administrator, the county auditor, and in most cases, you have heard all of these budgets. But what I would like to address are a few of the potential departments that may stand out to you and to the public. If we look into our general revenues area, we have motor vehicle. I think one of the areas that we recognized, that this board has recognized and evaluated in 2019 had to do with our motor vehicle time waits. The challenges that we face in motor vehicles, we continue to see the state handing down responsibilities to our motor vehicle staff, and that continues and contributes to that wait time. It's further been compounded by the issues that we've had with the MLARS program that has also, excuse me, also contributed to the length of stay. I believe in 2020, the state of Minnesota has, will be decommissioning MLARS. And part of that, in 2019, the state took an opportunity to compensate local motor vehicle areas centers with a one-time compensation to address some of the costs that motor vehicles have experienced. This board determined earlier this year that they would utilize those funds to hire 1.5 new employees to better meet the needs of the citizens and hopefully lower the weight. And so, the increase that you see here at 14.53 percent is the first time that those positions are showing up within the budget. One of the other areas that we would like to address is the county attorney's office. In 2019, the county attorney's office ceased to provide or handle cases for the city of Moorhead, and we also saw, so we saw a decrease in revenue, but we also saw an adjustment of the number of staff that we had within the program. Also, our county attorney, Brian Melton, was on deployment, and so a significant portion of this was deferring his salary, which was not in 2000, but is now included in the 2020 budget. While we're anticipating that our juvenile facility will be completed in early 2020, both our secure and non-secure programs will be doubling the number of beds in the program. The secure program, due to the project schedule, had already made their staffing adjustments in 2019 budget, but the non-secure program will be looking to hire their additional staff needs in 2020. It should be noted that in addition to these expenditures, we will also have additional opportunities to offset with additional revenues with the additional beds. One of the other areas in our juvenile detention program, Secure, we did see a 33.4 percent decrease. Our secure program was part of an 11-county cooperative service agreement in Minnesota and with Cass County, and we participated in the look-back period, but we identified a number of kids that come from Clay County in that program. During the look-back period for 2020, the number of residents that we had in our secure unit decreased, and therefore, we saw a lower dollar amount needed. And the last one that I'll touch on is our existing landfill. As mentioned previously, different departments saved a bunch of dollars over multiple years in anticipation of completing a significant purchase of project. The landfill will be constructed, a new landfill sale in 2020, and so that anticipates the significant increase in the budget change from 2019 to 2020. Are there any other, I yield for any questions, if there's any other specific questions that you may have in regards to any of the budget items listed? If not, I'll move on to page seven, and what we would like to do next is to take a look at the real estate projections and comparisons. This document, if you look at it, breaks down the tax impacts of market values of the homes based on $150,000, $200,000, $250,000, and $415,000. The information ends at $415,000, as this is where the market value ends. This document breaks down for our citizens the tax impacts in five areas, the county, the school district, the city or township, the EDA, and the watershed. It's important reminder for our employees, or excuse me, our citizens, from a historical standpoint, we utilize this information as if it was a citizen from Moorhead. Laurie has the ability to break down each of our cities in Moorhead, in Clay County, but for this presentation, we have historically used Moorhead. During the TNT meetings, we've also, on a consistent basis, looked at the $150,000 market value property. And so, what I would like to do is just take a look at the top market value here and focus on the two bottom lines. So, from the county perspective, looking down, the net tax payable increased 4.71 percent, or $28.58. The school currently shows a net deduction of $1.13, or 17.17 percent, but with the referendum that's gone through, Laurie's office will not have that information until the end of December, and so we were unable to provide that information update. The city or township is looking at a 3.13 percent change, and that increase would be The EDA has a 61 cent increase, or a 2.60 percent, and the watershed is looking at a 23 cent increase, or 1.02 percent. And so, when you look at all the totals that we have there, the net tax payable increase on a $150,000 home is $45.45. Now, it's important for our citizens to understand that the $150,000 property that we're trying to compare here is with apples to apples, so we're assuming that the $150,000 property, if it's the same one, remains the same value. And we know that based on how fortunate we are in this region, a lot of times, we are seeing market value increases, and so you may see an additional cost on a $150,000 home, but that will be based on the market value increase to the $150,000 home. And if you go down the line, this information holds true on both the 200, the 250, and the $415,000 home. Any questions there? All right, if we move to page eight, summary of estimated value and tax capacity for the last 15 assessment years. Focus of this document is looking at the total estimate value, total estimate market value of property in Clay County. Today, we're gonna be focusing most of our energy on the tilable land market values and the residential land market values. Historically, these two different market values make up between 78 to 81 percent of the total market value within Clay County, with the commercial market value covering the remaining percentage. Over the last 16 years, we've seen the market fluctuate. In 2004, where residential land and buildings were the significant percentage of 59.6, to 2014, where we saw the peak of the value of our tilable land. Over the last three years, we've really seen some stabilization of the market values, with the 2019 figures of tilable land at 25.9 percent and the land building at 52.8 percent, which has remained very consistent over the last three billing cycles, or budget cycles. Anybody have any questions with that? And I guess I think just the last thing that I'd like to touch on quick is, you know, I think it's important that our board, our citizens, understand that each year, this board considers any type of proposed tax increase, there's a great deal of scrutinization that goes into what we're doing here, into each budget. And passing out a tax increase to our citizens is not something that this board takes lightly or takes for granted in asking of you. The one thing that I would like to address, would just provide some examples, is one thing to say that, it's another thing to provide some information. And so, what I'd like to do is just touch on a couple of different information that we have from the state auditor's office. Each year, they take all of our county's information, and they compile them, and they rank them in various categories. And so, I'd like to touch on three areas that I think really drive home the point of, from the standpoint of the focus of trying to keep the taxes low here in Clay County. When we look at per capita, the total expenses in Clay County, Clay County sits at number 61 out of the 85 counties that reported, on the low end, or on the low side. Total charges, when our customers, citizens, have become our customers here at the courthouse, are looking for planning, building permits, and things like that, the charges that we provide, the charges that we charge for our services here are number 84 out of 85 in the county. And so, again, that's a way that we're not trying to increase any of those costs to our, excuse me, our citizens. And lastly, while we're here this evening, I just wanna touch on from a net tax levy situation, Clay County is number 75 out of 85 of the reporting counties per capita in the state of Minnesota. And so, while no one certainly likes any tax increase at all, what this data shows is that this county board values and certainly understands the needs for services for our citizens, but also focuses on delivering them in the most financially reasonable way. And so, with that, I'll yield any questions from the board.
Any questions for Steve? You're gonna get off easy with us, Steve, it looks like, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's important to note that over the last five or six months, we've had an opportunity to have our questions answered, so.
That's true.
You know, I don't want the public to think that because we're silent here, we, you know, we're ignoring, but our questions up to this point have been answered from a board standpoint.
And it's a long process to get to this point in the process, so. Well, we have some individuals here that would like to be heard this evening. Chris Braun?
Hi, good evening. My wife and I own a small farm in extreme northeast Clay County. We've been trying to no avail to get it classified as ag land. Talked with the assessor and the planning. I understand there's a 10-acre limit we've been trying to measure. We recently bought a few more acres, hopefully puts us into the magical number to be an ag, classified as ag land. I'm just wondering if there's anything else we should have done or still need to do. I'm just wondering if there's anything else we should have done or still need to do to reach that seemingly unattainable plateau of classification?
Well, I think that's a question for our assessor. Nancy, you want to...
All right, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Gary Ronsberg?
Good evening.
I'm Gary Ronsberg. I live a mile and a half north of Holly in Cromwell Township. I just kind of wanted to report that my taxes went up 29.6%. If we backed up a few years ago, our pasture and everything was underwater. The cemetery road north of Holly was underwater, so we were assessed, I don't know what it was, $800,000, and we're going to drain some of that water out. That would have improved our land. That's what I'm willing to pay, $800, $900, whatever it is, but make sure we put the culvert low enough. Of course, we had the meeting before the culvert went in. They put the culvert in, water never touched the culvert. So, our fences stayed underwater, our pasture was kind of useless, and now, over the dry years, it's dried down a little bit. But what I'm saying is, our land isn't probably worth what you guys are saying it is because it doesn't drain. So, now we're getting into wet years again. I've got a few head of cattle, but I just got done re-fencing, moving the fences back off, but now we're going to have to start coming in again. So, I don't really believe it's fair that my taxes go up 29.6%, especially when I was assessed a few years ago to improve it, and it never got improved because the culvert was too high.
Have you had a conversation with the assessor's office about this?
I didn't, I... Bertie or we did.
Okay, I think we'll have you meet with Nancy also and see if she can...
All right. Sounds good.
See if they can help you address that issue. Ken Peterson?
Good evening.
Good evening. I guess I'm in the same boat as Gary there, only my taxes went up 46%. And, you know, I call him a revenuer. He was out here a year, a couple of years ago, and took pictures and everything of my place. Yes, I've done updates, but it's, my house is 100 years old. It's either, you know, you can call them updates, or you can tell them, you know, they're repaired so that the thing doesn't fall down. I don't know. It's, it's, I'm on, my wife and I are both retired, we're on a fixed income. Our taxes went up $958 in one year. How is a fixed income supposed to absorb that? It's no wonder people are, I mean, I've got nine children. They're all out of the house, of course, but they will not live on this side of the river. Taxes are too high. They live in Fargo. They will not cross that river.
Yeah, it sounds like we need the assessor's office to talk with you too, but Kevin, you had some...
Yeah, so, you mentioned that your taxes are up, and it's up $958. Can you tell me how much your market value, I know we're not here to talk about that, but I mentioned...
The last year's market value was $208,000. Now, it's $283.
Okay. Yeah. So, that could be a significant piece of why that tax dollars went up, and that, again, becomes a deal...
I realize that, no, but I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here, and we'll have the assessor's office work with you, see what they can explain.
And then, if I can, just kind of zeroing in on the $958, that's your total increase in property taxes? And I don't, you know, that doesn't tell me, was there a school bond issue that was part of that?
Yes, most of it was county, and that was $460.
Okay. So, the county's portion of that $958 was $460. And I would venture to guess that a significant reason why that $460 is there is because that close to $80,000 jump in market value. So, I, you know, that's probably a significant, that doesn't give you any comfort, but, you know, but I think it would be good to talk to Nancy.
You know, as far as school, I mean, we've got a great school system in Holly, and I don't mind paying taxes for that.
Right.
My kid's got a good education. I've got some grandchildren in the Holly School District now, so...
And that's a good reason for your kids to come over to Minnesota, is because we have really good school systems here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd Menow?
I'll pass because I'm in St. Paul State, so I'll go across.
Okay, thank you, then, Lloyd. Anyone else that would like to be heard this evening? Anything else for Steve, for the board?
Nothing else for the board, thanks. We will, I should mention, we are scheduled to meet next week, and so, we will be looking to certify the budget on December 17th.
Sounds good. Where are you, Jim?